My name is Rick Pierce. I am president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce that serves Middletown, Monroe, and Trenton. We like to put on these candidate forums for our membership and for the residents so they can kind of hear what the candidates have in store from how they would like to either move the district forward and/or their community and city forward. I am going to ask of you to please turn off your cell phone and/or turn it on vibrate. That goes for you guys too, so if you want to just check that real quickly, thank you. Moderating this evening is Jim Keller. Jim is co-chair in our Government Relations Committee. He is also on our Board of Directors, and during his day job, he works at DeKoonik North America. I just want to congratulate all of the candidates up here deciding to run for public office. It's not an easy decision. It's going to take a lot of effort and energy. Best of luck to all of you. And with that, Jim?
Thank you. And again, thanks to all who are attending, as well as those who will be attending, I guess not by Zoom, but by recording perhaps in the future on our Chamber website, and of course, welcome to the candidates. So if we could, let's get started. And in terms of operation, we're going to start with our opening statement, and it will be simply in alphabetical order, starting with Mr. Carpenter.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Carpenter. I'm currently serving on the Monroe School Board, finishing up my second term. When I'm not on the school board, I am working at General Electric down here in Evendale. I work in one of the research and development labs as a manufacturing engineer. I'm also married, which happy birthday to my wife. But we also have three children. They all attend Monroe. One is a freshman in high school. She runs cross-country. We have a sixth grader that plays softball, and she's starting travel ball, so that should be pretty interesting. And then we have a fourth grader, and she plays soccer, and I help coach that soccer team, so it keeps us nice and busy. But thank you to the Chamber for having us here this evening. This is a great service for the Monroe residents. They can really get to know all of us pretty well. And I'll stop at one minute.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Fulham, and I'm a candidate for Monroe Local Schools Board of Education. Thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for arranging tonight's event, giving me the opportunity and us the opportunity to provide the Monroe voters a better insight into our goals, our specific views on topics, and why they should vote for me on November 2nd. I'm a husband and father of two amazing daughters. My oldest is a student at the Monroe Primary School, and my youngest will be entering the district here in a couple of years. My wife, who's in attendance, thank you, is an elementary teacher at a nearby district who has made it her passion to educate children. Education is the cornerstone of our family. Like so many of the people of Monroe, my wife and I chose to raise our family here primarily due to the excellent schools and small-town feel. I'm a proud member of this community and volunteer much of my free time to attending and documenting our high school athletics and events through photography. You may have seen some of my photos online that I posted on Facebook and such. I'm always looking for ways to support our students, teachers, and families of Monroe as I aspire to be a respected leader within the community. I'm a graduate of Fairfield High School with a bachelor's degree in sales and marketing. Professionally, I'm a digital marketing director with a wealth of experience in communication, marketing, graphic design, and advertising. I take great pride in being a contributing member of our wonderful town. I recognize the strengths and weaknesses of our schools and want to be an active participant in the future growth of our district. I entered this election with a single fundamental goal: to work for our students, providing strong leadership and direction for an excellent school district. As a member of the Board, I will act as a professional and dedicated servant to all families within our community to ensure that our district continues growth with a positive trajectory. I want to work alongside the other members of the Board and our administration to uphold the highest level of standards within our district. Again, thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to interact with the community in this public forum.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Hagedorn, and I'll start with a little introduction about myself. I received my bachelor's degree from Bowling Green University in Management and Technology. I currently work at Cleveland Cliffs as an account rep, and I have 19 years in the steel industry. I've lived in Monroe for the past 18 years. I've been married to my husband, Tom Hagedorn, for 22 years, and we have three children. Our oldest daughter graduated from Monroe in 2016. I have a senior this year, Zach. He plays football and wrestles. And I have a daughter, Tori Hagedorn, who is a junior, and she attends Butler Tech in the Exercise Science Program, and she's also on the sidelines as an athletic trainer assistant. I've also been on the Athletic Booster Board for the last year and a half, and being on that Board, we have grown that program and have a lot more members join since I've been on that Board. It's an honor to support the Monroe Athletics and to be active with the students and the athletes. Monroe is a great family community, and that's one of the reasons why we moved here 18 years ago. Families are currently always continuing to move into Monroe, so it's a growing community. So that's one of the reasons why I'd like to be on the Board, is to help with the schools continue to grow and make room for the new students. Monroe is the second in Butler County behind Ross in test scores, so I'd like to continue with what the current Board has done with the curriculum and that to keep Monroe in second place or even to beat Ross in the test scores so that it can become a better school, so more students will want to come, because that's what Monroe is. It's a good education, has a good education for families. I'm excited for the possibility to serve the Monroe community on the school Board, and with that, I will end and continue with answers later.
For those who don't know me, my name is Tiffany Cram, and I grew up in this area. I've been a Monroe resident for seven years now, and my husband Ryan and I have four children. Two are already going to school here in the district, and two are excited to be joining in in the next couple of years. Our youngest is three, and our oldest is 13. You might have recently seen our family, our kids included, and some of their friends in the homecoming parade last week. We had a good time with that. We really love the tight-knit community here in Monroe. It's just so unique and special and not something that you find, you know, in just any town. We especially love the small-town feel and the familiar faces that we often see around town. I'd like to say a few words about why I'm running for school board and what I'd hope to contribute as a school board member if I were to be elected. First, having always loved children, I earned a degree in early childhood education from the University of Dayton in 2005, and since then, I put my degree to good use working with kids in various caregiving and teaching settings. With my educational background and my experiences since graduating, I feel like I'd be able to bring a unique perspective to the school board as someone who can also relate to the concerns of teachers and administrators. And second, since I'm a mother of four, who will have at least one child in our district for the next 15 years, I obviously have a vested interest in the success of our schools. And I feel too like it's important to have at least one person on the Board, preferably more, that currently have children in the district. By the time my first term would be up, if I were to be elected, we'll actually have one child in the high school, one in the junior high, one in the elementary school, and then one primary school-aged child. And I also think having at least one woman, particularly a mother, also adds an important perspective to the school board. So it's my hope to bring my experience and my voice as a mother, my background and experiences in education, and my eagerness to work cooperatively with others to contribute to the continued excellence of Monroe Local Schools.
Very good. Thank you. Now we enter Phase Two of determining our qualifications as candidates and exploring that with the Q and A. So first question from Mr. Fulham, please. I'm going to go right into the existential type questions. What is the role of governance, of a governance school board?
Sure. So, you know, I've been attending the school board meetings for a little over a year, most of them online as, you know, when COVID hit. This is something I've been very passionate about for a long time. I think it's important to note that we've had some excellent school board members and some really good direction to follow. And I think by watching them and learning from them over the last year or so, I've really found that, you know, making sure that we have the right people in place in the superintendent position as well as the treasurer is obviously the most important, and they've done such a fantastic job over the last several years to getting that corrected. Watching the budget and making sure that the treasurer is held accountable for what they're responsible for, and making sure that the superintendent is held accountable for their responsibility is extremely important. And then obviously, listening to the community and making sure that we're being a voice for the community and providing that feedback and that guidance and that direction to the district is paramount for success, and I would love to be a part of something that's already very good moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Carpenter, let's explore that a little bit further. In terms of the role of a governance school board, can you provide us some examples of decisions that you think the school board should make and some examples that the school board shouldn't make? Kind of a separation of powers type question.
Yeah, that should be pretty straightforward. So as a school board member, the most important thing is really, we only have two employees, right? We have our treasurer and we have our superintendent. So when it comes to things that we need to make decisions on, it's definitely hiring those two people. That's of the utmost importance, right? Those are the two people that are going to be guiding the school district, hiring your faculty members, doing those things. Things that we don't need to be getting involved in, day-to-day operations of the district. I don't need to be involved in the attendance policy within the district or anything like that. So understanding where we sit in the hierarchy, letting the administrators do their job, teachers do their jobs, the superintendent do their jobs, that's what makes this whole thing very successful. If we, as school board members, start getting involved in the kind of micromanaging type of thing, it doesn't work out very well, so.
Thank you. Ms. Hagedorn, could you give us some examples of your work as a volunteer where you called upon some of the types of leadership skills that you believe would aid you in performing as a Monroe school board member?
I'd say one of the major things, I volunteer on the Athletic Booster Program that I had mentioned earlier, and it's a lot of it is I'm using my skills as communication, talking with elders, making sure they understand what is needed, what is required, to get volunteers and tell us and make it fun for those volunteers that want to come and help out. If it's fun and intriguing that you can get other people to come and enjoy it. So I think having that ability, the communication is vital. You want to have open communication. You want to be honest with people. If you're honest and they know what is expected and what is needed to be done, they're more open to help out in these situations.
Ms. Cram, same question, a little more specific. Can you cite a specific type of example where you've displayed those kinds of leadership skills?
Let's see. I have quite a bit of experience in, like, teaching in various settings. I have volunteered with teaching at church and helping my husband with, he coaches a lot of the teams here and things like that, and so in those situations, I have worked with, you know, like communicating with families and other teachers and... That's all I have with that one.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carpenter. As we all know, Monroe has been growing with a capital G over the last decade, and consequently, the district has continued to grow in many ways. How do you intend to, if you're on the Board, how do you intend to manage that growth with minimal negative repercussions? And what does long-term planning look like in managing that growth?
I think the first thing we need to look at is we have to build a new school building. This building and the primary school are no longer big enough for the district that we are right now, and that's only going to continue to become a problem in the next five years. So priority number one is we need to build a building, and we started this process years ago, I mean, prior to Kathy being the superintendent, back when Phil was the superintendent, we started working with the Ohio School Facilities Commission on developing, I guess it was redoing our master plan, and we got real close and it got pulled out. So I know with Mr. Buskirk, we've talked about how in the next two years, that is what we have to do. We have to build this building, and we need to get our kids out of learning in closets, learning in little weird spaces in the media center, get them into a suitable classroom so that way the learning environment that these kids are in is suitable to the level of education that we provide here, which is the best in the state of Ohio.
Thank you. Ms. Hagedorn, same question. With the number and staggered group of ages of your children, you've certainly had a front-row seat in this. How do you intend to manage that growth?
I would say the similar as what Tim Carpenter had said, we definitely need to have a new building built. That is number-one priority. As the space here at this building currently with elementary and the junior high and high school on one building, they've done, the teachers and administration have done a wonderful job with making use of the space that we do have, but breaking it up, like using the media center and all that is just not really acceptable. So I think it's vital that we start looking at building a new building, getting back with the community. Prior, they were looking at building an elementary school. Is that still what's needed? Or is it a different school? Kind of to get that started. I think maybe even, I know at one point, the primary building had modulars outside to help with the students to have, you know, add more classroom. It might not be ideal, but it's something that could be a short-term fix while we build a new building to add to the current student growth that we have.
Mr. Fulham, can you provide us with examples of what type of experience you have that would aid you in assisting with this type of long-term growth management?
Sure, absolutely. So I graduated from Fairfield, and when I was a student there, you know, we built a brand-new school, and there's been multiple facilities in that area, and I've always been kind of intrigued in that process. So even from a young age, I kind of watched that happen up until recently when they demolished and rebuilt schools in that district. I think, you know, being somebody new onto the Board, it's important for me to really ask questions and to listen to the community on this. I don't have the answers, but I certainly want to work with the folks who have done this before in, you know, surrounding districts who have had to grow quickly, like Lakota and some of the other schools, like Mason, and learn from their mistakes as well as the things that they felt really helped their school develop into the larger community that they are. We have to work with the city. We need to understand what the city wants to do, and I think some of the things that I've done recently in my profession is we've built new dealerships. I worked for an automotive dealership company, and I was involved in a lot of the communication on how to lay things out and understand the flow of what that looked like. So I think I can transition some of that into what I know about school buildings as well as learning from the people around us within the district and outside.
Thank you. Ms. Cram, we can't ignore the pandemic, of course, but besides handling the continued pandemic, what do you believe is the most pressing issue facing Monroe schools, and what would you plan to do about it?
Well, this goes right along with what they were talking about. You know, we're overcrowded. We need more space in our schools. We need to come up with a solution for that. But also, in addition to that, we need more funding. We're not receiving adequate funding from the state. Many people are familiar with the funding cap, where we have so many students coming into our district, we're growing, you know, so quickly, but the state funds that we receive doesn't quite match up with the number of students that we have coming into the district. So that makes, we're actually, if I'm remembering this correctly, we're only receiving about 50% of those funds that we're due. And so because of that, you know, there's just so much more that we could be doing for our students, whether it's working on increasing the space or, you know, any other way that we can add to their learning. So as a school board member, I would be looking to, I know our school board now has prioritized going to state representatives and trying to get this funding that our school is due, and I would definitely keep that as a priority as well to keep pursuing that funding that our students deserve.
Ms. Hagedorn, same question. What do you see as the most pressing thing facing the Monroe school board in the future?
The most pressing? I would say the biggest issue is the space issue, which I hate to kind of reiterate that, but I think that that is the most pressing issue for the school board at this time, is the space issue that we look at, and because it keeps getting worse every year, we keep getting more students, and the size of the building isn't changing. So that's where I think it's the enrollment that we do have. And the communities, there's communities, houses, new housing that is constantly being built. You can drive around Monroe and just see the growth that is happening, and you can just watch it happen, that there's more students, less space.
Mr. Carpenter, believe it or not, the four candidates seem to have pretty much a consensus that for the last number of years, Monroe schools have been underfunded from the state of Ohio. Because of that, is it fair to say Monroe's had this distinction of being really the best district in Ohio to educate students? Kind of the most efficient, least amount of funds, but best results? And how then, building on that, how do you see the Fair School Funding Plan phased in at Monroe in future biennial budgets?
So to start, yes, Monroe is the best public school in the state of Ohio. So we actually, as a Board, we've been actively engaged in advocating for the Fair School Funding Bill, and the original increase was not, we're fully funded, like we were hoping it would be, but just this past year, we did see an increase in our funding, which is fantastic. Any increase is better than a decrease. It's better than staying flat. The hope is, is that as we continue to revisit this with Senator Lang and Representative Hall, that they understand that we're not coming to them trying to just be a squeaky wheel, but instead, we genuinely need to fund our district. We need to be able to educate our kids the way that they deserve to be educated, but the cost of things continues to increase. So if we stay flat, we only continue to fall behind. So thankfully, as a district, we have a great treasurer who always makes sure that we never go into deficit spending or anything, but that's one of those important things that we need to make sure that we continue to address, is our treasurer, make sure that our funds are there when they need it to be, and they continue to advocate on behalf of the citizens of Monroe.
Thank you. Mr. Fulham, again, staying with this topic, a little bit different tangent though. It's pretty clear that we think that Monroe is going to have continued growth. We know, I know my company's going to be contributing to that, and we're going to want to hire more graduates and so forth, but we're going to be dealing with this growth and overcrowding problem. What solutions would you support prior to the district's pending approval of state building construction funds? What solutions would you support prior to their pending approval? And we're looking, you know, at options such as portable classrooms or, say, leasing of learning spaces from non-school property owners, from private individuals. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, that's a good question. I haven't given that a ton of thought, honestly, but I do think that, you know, we do have to use the resources that we have available. I don't like the idea of my child having to go off-site or having to be in, you know, a non-permanent fixture. I remember being in a class like that in high school, and it was, you know, the winter wasn't easy. So I don't love those solutions. So I think we all agree, and I think that the community as a whole understands that it is going to take some work to get schools built, so there could be, you know, temporary solutions in place, but I certainly don't want for that to be the norm. I don't think our children, that's not why we moved to Monroe. In fact, I mean, I think they deserve the very best, and that doesn't sound like the very best to me of what you just described. So I'm certainly open to those conversations, but I believe that the best solution is for us to work with the state, continue to press the state to get the money that we're owed. We have new community members such as myself. I'm the newest community member on this panel, or on this Board panel here, and we need to contribute, and we need to ask the people to contribute their fair share as well, and we need to come together because our schools and our kids, honestly, they deserve the very best.
Thank you. Ms. Cram, what are your thoughts on this interim process of addressing the obvious overcrowding and lack of funds need? What do you see as interim solutions?
Well, like A.J. said, it's not something that I guess I've thought a lot specifically about, because on questions like that, I would defer to, you know, the superintendent, make sure I'm communicating with others in the district, and see what their suggestions are, as they're the ones that are, you know, doing the day-to-day. I also, like you said, you know, I think we need to use our resources, and we need to do something temporarily, whether it's, you know, off-site or like a modular, you know, area where they can learn outside of the building. But again, we need to keep on, keep pressing the state and make sure that we can get that funding.
Ms. Hagedorn, same question?
Same question. I do, I disagree with having leasing or renting off-site. I would, I think it would be best for the students to all be in one central area, and that would be on school grounds. So however that would look, I also think that that's what's best, is to have the students in the same area so that they can still, like, say, if modulars are the short-term answer, it's definitely not a long-term answer or a long-term solution. I would say I'd be okay with that while construction was going on, if there was an end site. You know, for like three years, we're going to do this until the building is built, so that the students can still eat in the cafeteria with their classmates, you know, attend other classes with their classmates, just like have whatever department in this area and then still be able to go into the building for whatever other classes and still have access to the locker rooms, the gymnasium, the auditoriums, the cafeteria, the library, the media center. I think it's important to keep the students in the central area, so that's what I would support.
Thank you. After all, this forum is being sponsored by the business community, particularly the Chamber, and because of that, we have some special interests as well. So next question, is Monroe's a leader in defining what we call the future-ready graduate? And this is based on the business community, the members of the Chamber's input. Out of that, there have been developed graduation policies that reflect what businesses in this area have determined to be critical to life success. So based on that... in this area have determined to be critical to life success. So, based on that, Mr. Fulham, how will, how will you assure that Monroe School stays on what we say is the track of preparing students for life success?
Yeah, well, you know, I always, this is a great question, 'cause I, I reflect on, on my time, I, in, in grade school and high school, and, and what that meant to develop me into the person that I am, the professional that I am. And so, I can really understand why that's so important now as an adult. You know, our schools have, to your point, done a terrific job of building a curriculum around those needs. Fortunately, we've had some really, really great, positive people in some really important positions that have set that up for us. I don't know that we need to adjust much. I think we need to keep the course. We need to learn from what we've, what we've seen and what we've done over those years, and make sure to capitalize on that. One of the things that I, I really find a lot of interest in, that I, I wanna learn more about, is, you know, a lot of students that go off-campus to Butler Tech and, and go into trades. I work in an industry right now that is desperately in need of trade workers and automotive technicians. And seeing that need, and understanding that we can develop, you know, students into that type of position, you know, maybe the student that doesn't wanna go to a four-year college, or really likes to work on cars, or really likes to work on computers, having those options and having those opportunities for those children, which is extremely important for me as a board member, is, is what I would wanna do. And I would wanna keep that, keep that track and, and just accelerate it as much as possible.
Ms. Cram, same question. And again, I would add that, that as background, where the future-ready graduate comes from is an observation, not, not only of Monroe, but, for instance, my background, international, and certainly in terms of domestically, all states. So, wide experience, and, and it's pretty much a general maxim or whatever in business that kids that are mictriculating at, at age 18 are not displaying the types of, of, of life skills and so forth. And so, hence the future-ready graduate. Again, what can you add to, to, you know, there's this symbiosis between business and the school system, okay? We, we're stakeholders in, in the community, and, and, you know, how can we assure that we're gonna be preparing Johnny and Suzie for whatever in life?
Oh, that's a good question. I think that the opportunities that our students have, like with Butler Tech, we were talking about, you know, they can follow the different interests and really get some specialized education and training in some of the careers around here that they might be interested in. I think that our curriculum offers a really, it's just really comprehensive, and, you know, it's, it meets the needs of students with all different interests and aspirations as to what they would like to do when they, when they graduate. So, I think just continuing with that, like AJ said, and adding more opportunities, and potentially even like, if there's internships or anything that they could maybe participate in part of the day, you know, with some of the businesses around that's related to future interests of theirs, would give them a chance to try it out, see what it's like, and, and just mature and grow in that kind of area.
Ms. Hagedorn, where do you stand?
Where do I stand? I actually find this as, as one of my passions for the students. I, I've always said, and I've tell my children, and I tell my children's friends and everything, learn a skill. If you learn something that you love to do, and you find a, and you find a job and a career in something that you love to do, you will never work a day in your life. So, I am, I, I think that it's, the Monroe Schools should help students expand on their, on what they enjoy to do, and, and to actually learn and do that. My, my own daughter goes to Butler Tech to learn exercise science, because that's what her passion is. One of the things that I've most recently have talked about, and I've learned myself as a parent, and I will continue this as a, as a board member, is to support the curriculum at Monroe local schools. One of the things I recently brought to Mr. Prohaska's attend, our attention is Monroe does not teach Word, Excel, and PowerPoint to students. That's what the business world uses. They don't use Google. So, students from Monroe are graduating without knowing Microsoft Office. This is a failure. And I, and I have stressed this to Mr. Prohaska, and he has taken it to the curriculum director. At this time, I have a mind blank right now on who that is, and they're actually visiting that, because I think that's important, that students graduate and can actually go into the business world knowing a software, or, or even college. You know, my son's taken CCP at Miami, and he didn't know Word to write an English paper. I think that's an improvement that Monroe actually has, the, has a step in that they can improve upon.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter, I, I'm going to, to also continue with you, and, and I haven't heard this yet. I, you know, it's a pluralistic society. Do you think that business is overstepping its grounds, that we should stick to our side of the road and stay out of, you know, and frankly, it's not curriculum, but, but are we, you know, overstepping our bounds in, in seeking this type of input?
No, absolutely not. As somebody who works in technology, I kinda understand where you guys are coming from, because I also struggle having to hire technicians. So, it's difficult to hire somebody when you're looking for somebody who's kind of a doer type of mentality. And with the Future-Ready Student Program, that was something I thought was the greatest thing I've ever seen. I know, Rick, you came and presented at the, one of the school board meetings about it. We were very excited about getting Monroe involved in that. And I know we saw recently where there was Monroe students who served in like a co-op type program at your business, and it was fantastic. They were there during the summertime, and I believe they were there for two to three weeks, if I'm not mistaken. And what that does, it allows kids the opportunity to understand what does the workplace look like, you know? 'Cause as a high school student, I didn't have a clue what the actual workplace looked like. And I know these kids don't have that understanding either, but getting them out into the community, getting them tours at AK Steel, getting them down to Worthington, getting them over to Krispy Kreme down here, it doesn't matter, but getting them outside of this building, so that way they can see what is out there in this world, and maybe they find exactly what they wanna find. But, I think that, I don't find that as an overstep at, at all. I find that as a great collaborative partnership between the school district and the, our community partners and business.
Thank you. Continuing in the area of jobs, we understand that recently the City Council of Monroe, where it was stated that Monroe only wants to attract high-tech jobs. So, our question is, is this a position the schools should echo, or does it matter to the schools what kinds of jobs are created in the city, whether they be high-tech or general labor, what have you? We'll start with Ms. Cram.
Excuse me. Well, that's a good question. I mean, I think that it's definitely helpful to prepare students for, for a high-tech world, but, you know, there's just, there's so many things out there, so many different careers, and so many paths that our kids can take. And so, while I think they should be prepared for that, you know, I think they need to be more, they're, they need to be more well-rounded in their education, and just equipped to be able to follow whatever it is that they are interested in. Certainly that should be, you know, being literate and technology and those sorts of things. You know, I think that's beneficial to everyone at this, at this point in time. But, I don't think that it would be very useful to just kind of concentrate our efforts just on that one thing, when there are, you know, so many other careers out there that are also needed.
Mr. Fulham, same question?
Well, I'm going back and forth in my head on this one, honestly, because while, while I'm into technology myself, I'm, I've, I've made a career, you know, through creating websites and advertising online, and doing different things along that, that line. I've, I've learned through that process that there are massive amounts of opportunity for people who are very good at communicating, that are technology-based jobs, but not what you would consider to be technology-based characteristics. I'm, I'm a firm believer that we need to be better at learning how to interact with one another, and I think that that's the core of, of any good position. And I, I wanna see jobs in Monroe that's going to obviously help lift up the city. But, I also don't wanna get, I don't wanna get shoved into a single industry simply because it's the hot topic, or something that's driving today. Because I think that what tomorrow may look like, though it probably will include technology jobs, I, I do think that we need to be aware of those other positions that are extremely important to the roles of those, those types of companies as well. So, I don't know that I, I completely agree that we should force ourselves into a single industry. I wanna, I wanna be a little bit more broad than that. I want the right jobs for the right people who can make good livings, and, and bring those monies into, into Monroe, so that we have good tax-paying community that can support things like new school buildings, and better facilities, and things of that nature. So, I'm up for the conversation, though. I, I don't, I haven't had it with the city council, but I definitely would like to have that in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Hagedorn, same question?
Same question. Well, I find it interesting, because I have not heard about that from city council, so I'm a little bit behind the eight ball on that one. But, I also think that to, to have the, the high-tech industry in Monroe, I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing. I, I think the city should be more well-rounded, so that peop-, not, not everybody is going to go into a high-tech industry. Not everybody has that skillset. Not everybody is interested in that. So, I think that it's important just to keep the options open for, for students, and for, and, and just the workforce in general, because everybody has different talents. I am not a tech person. I'm more of a, a social person, a more customer service-oriented person, so that, that doesn't, you know, fit my wheelhouse. And that's just an example of, you know, not, not all students and not everybody is, is in that industry and would, and would succeed. So, you kinda wanna keep it open and have lots of different options for different people and their, and their different talents that they have.
Mr. Carpenter, your thoughts on high-tech, no-tech?
Yeah, so, I actually think it's a great idea to try to attract high-tech jobs to Monroe. If you drive down 63 right now, you will see this wonderful Kroger fulfillment center. And it's a great building, and inside of it is like pure magic on the inside of this thing. There's little robots zipping around, picking groceries, shove them in these little carts. It drops down, they put it onto a truck, and off it goes to somebody's house. Fantastic. I fully support bringing jobs like that. I want Monroe to come out, come down to GE and say, "Hey, GE, I want you to come up here and build a facility in Monroe." Because when we bring those types of businesses in, the people who work in those types of businesses are encouraged to move here to Monroe. We have a tax credit that would fully benefit somebody who lived here and they worked here. And with those high-tech jobs, it changes the school a little bit as well. Parents who work in a high-technology type of role, they value education. They understand how education has changed their life, and they want that same thing for their children. So, if it's up to me, I'm, I fully support the city council and their endeavors. With that being said, I do not want to give out any more tax abatements. I think that is something that everyone here can agree on, is that we have had way too many tax abatements. And I don't like the whole, "Let's play with the school's money" thing. So, I'm kinda over that. But, if we can get those high-tech jobs, I think that sounds fantastic.
Okay. It leads me to another, as we get more towards the end of this process, another kind of existential type question. You know, we often hear that one person or another person is a good board member, or they're a bad board member, yet I don't think we ever have a clear definition, at least not very often, of what constitutes a good board member. Ms. Cram, based on all this, how would you describe a good board member?
Well, that's pretty easy to describe, thankfully, because we've had an amazing board as our examples, who just work together beautifully, and who have a great relationship with our superintendent and our treasurer. So, I would say, in going off of their example, you know, having a mutual respect for one another, being able to hear each other's opinions, not always agree on, you know, what you think should come of it, but at the end of the day, you decide on it together. You make a decision that's in the best interest of the students, and then you're united as a board going forward, and you support each other in that decision. So, I think that that's super important. And then also, I think, having a trusting and positive relationship with the superintendent and treasurer, in addition to all of the board members, so that, you know, you can really work smoothly together, and, and you're just really working cooperatively, so that you can have the best interests of students at heart.
Mr. Fulham, in one minute or less, how would you describe a good board member?
Sure. I, I think the most important trait of a good board member is just somebody that can, can collaborate, excuse me, collaborate well with, with one another. I, I think, you know, being open-minded, and, you know, leaving your views at the door, and really taking an open mind into conversations, listening to the community, being involved in the community, understanding what's important to the people, and the students, and the teachers, the administration, the things that really make this city what it is, and why we are all here today. I mean, that, that's so crucial. I don't, you know, luckily, I don't think there's anybody on this stage tonight that has an ego or an agenda, and, and I, that's why I'm excited about this opportunity. And I think that that's important, and why we've had such a strong board in the past, is because of those traits. And so, I think open communication, willingness to reflect on things, learning from those around us is, is extremely important.
Ms. Hagedorn, your thoughts?
My thoughts? I think the traits of a good bor-, board member is, like AJ had said, is somebody that can collaborate with everybody and not have a personal agenda, someone that is, is willing to leave their personal opinions aside and work together with the other board members to come to an agreement, to make a decision on what is best for the students, best for the administration, and best for the school district. Also, somebody that is willing to listen to the community and what the community wants. It's important that we have, that the school board has the community support and involvement in, in the decisions that they are, that they, that we, that the school board makes. So, a lot of it is having good listening skills, and, and using what they, what the board member hears from the community and from the other board members to make a, a, a good and right decision on, on whatever topic or policy that's being discussed. And also have a good, open communication with the superintendent and the treasurer for, and to be able to ask any questions. If a board, board member doesn't understand something or needs clarification, to have that open communication with them, to ask and understand, so that they can make good, good decisions for the school.
So, Mr. Carpenter, as an incumbent, do you think that the present board has, have been good listeners, and have put the, the, the school district at the forefront, as one would, would hope?
Absolutely. I know, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the whole board or anything, but for myself, we're in a rather contentious period. We have been for the past 18 months. And, you know, much like the other three have mentioned, it's our ability to collaborate and to work well together. I mean, that's what allows us to be successful. It can be really, really hard. You get yelled at sometimes for no reason, just because somebody's mad at you, because you're on the school board sometimes, and that's fine. Like, so, having that... Like, so having that understanding that there's going to be people who just don't like you. Like, there's not. Like, there's going to be people, as soon as you get voted on, that just don't like you. The important thing is to understand that the other school board members, they have your back, the superintendent, he's got your back. And as long as the decision that you make is in the best interest of the students that you are here to represent, then you can sleep very peacefully at night. And I think that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Shall we proceed to closing statements? Ms. Cram, would you please provide your closing comments?
Sure. Well, I hope people feel like they've gotten to know me at least a little bit better this evening. But to summarize, I'm a mom, soon to have four kids attending school in this wonderful district, so I have a vested interest in our schools being the best that they can be. I also have a background in relevant experience in education that I think will be of benefit to the board. And I respect and value the views of others, which helps me to be able to work cooperatively so we can work toward a common goal. I feel like these three things, being a parent and mother of children in the district, having a relevant background in education, as well as having the ability to work amicably and cooperatively with others, would make me an asset to our school board and the service of our students and our community. While of course I'm not an expert in every matter that will be addressed as a school board member, I'm eager to take what I do know and continue to learn more so that I can do all I can to ensure that every decision we make as a board upholds the values and vision of our excellent school district.
Thank you. Ms. Hagedorn?
I'm very excited to have the potential to be on the Monroe Local School, on the Monroe School Board. I have the skills and the, I don't have the knowledge to be on the school board. I have the ability to ask questions. I have an open mind to work with the other board members. I am able and willing to research and look into any decisions that need to be made. I have, I'm very open to the community. I can be available to anybody in the community that has any questions or ideas or anything that they'd like to discuss and bring up to the school board at discussions and such. I'm just very excited for this opportunity. I have a passion for the children and for the students to grow in their education and to become, you know, hard-working citizens after they graduate high school so that they can go on to college, to workforce, to the military, whatever they choose to be. I think that Monroe should continue with giving them the education that they need to be successful in life, and I'm excited for that opportunity. And I really hope that you'll vote for Debbie Hagedorn.
Thank you. Mr. Carpenter?
Sure. I was actually expecting you to get an AJ here, so I'm a little, all right, but I'll go ahead.
Got to switch the order.
I know, that was kind of crazy. It's just like, the pressure's on you now or something. But first, I just want to thank the Chamber for putting this on. This was great. I hope you all found some value in this because it was good for me to get to hear perspective from everybody else. I just want to say that over the next four years of this term, there is a lot of unfinished business that I would like to see become finished business, right? We hit on a couple of those things. School funding, right? We have to get fully funded. There's no excuse for us to be partially funded. That's just a complete failure by our state to not give us the money that we are entitled to. So I'd love to see that through and continue to have those conversations with our elected officials in the state of building a building, right? We have to build that building. If we don't build that building, our students are going to suffer. So having started those conversations previously, I'd love to stay on the board to continue those conversations and to help get that across the finish line. But I'll go ahead and close it up here. Sorry about that. But again, I've really enjoyed serving on the board over the past eight years. It was difficult at first because just like they said, you really don't really know what's going on at first, but all three of these people would be quick learners and with Mr. Grant and Mr. Leeds on the board, if I don't get elected, you have some great people here. So again, thank you and sorry for going like a minute over my time limit here, but I'll go ahead and stop now.
You only used one minute for your opening, so.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Fulham, could you please provide your closing statement?
Well, I definitely want to thank the Chamber and Jim, thanks for moderating. I'd like to conclude the evening, wrap up everything up here with a list of goals that I will work toward as a member of the board. I want to ensure that our students continue to excel in the classroom, importance on in the classroom, with a strong curriculum and a healthy learning environment, with the goal to be the top-ranked district in Butler County. I aim to work towards a responsible growth plan for new buildings and facility improvements, maximizing available state funding that, yes, we are absolutely entitled to, so that our students have the resources they need to be successful. I will encourage and look for ways to improve communication between the district and the families of our students. I want to retain and attract the best teachers, administrators, and paraprofessionals in the area. I always want to provide the best extracurricular activities. I'm so proud of the Star football team this year. I hope you guys are enjoying this. I am. And specialized learning for our students. It's important to maintain and build upon the strong relationship of the community and the school district. And finally, let's re-energize and reinforce the characteristics of what makes Monroe a special place to raise and educate our children. I want to be a part of that and I'm very, very thankful for this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you.